This is the June 18, 2024 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none, I'll proceed pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1508-945-4410, Conference ID 203386491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And I'll begin with a roll call to establish our quorum. Select Board Member Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
And Select Board Member Shell is present. This evening, we have two sets of minutes, June 4 and June 5, for approval. We have public announcements and agenda requests. We have a public hearing on the amendment, a proposed amendment to the Town of Chatham Local Alcoholic Beverages Licensing Regulation, Section 6, which is the application procedure. We have a report on Chatham Wells PFAS and Drinking Water Testing and Pumping Update as of May 2024 from the Director of Public Works, Mr. Failey. We have then next public comment on the business agenda. And then finally, we have a long business agenda, which consists of a number of applications for use of town property, granting of one-day alcohol permits, granting of one-day entertainment licenses. And let's see if there's anything else here that doesn't fit under that description. Ah, yes, an application for a new common victueller, I pronounce it vidler, license for Pandavignon, and an award of bond anticipation note with Kerry Mazerol as the Director of Finance. We have a report regarding construction on Morris Island from the Director of Natural Resources, Mr. Berman. And finally, we have two committee appointments. So with that, I will open the meeting for, with comments on the minutes of June 4, if any, or a motion.
Mr. Chair, to approve approval of minutes for June 4, 2024?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes.
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, bottom of, top of page three, just my version here during the public hearing. Last sentence, "One element of the managerial position is hours spent on site and the availability of the approach to the position." What are her hours? That was the case for the past few years regardless of being on the, and they're just dangling, there's nothing there. So I just, you gotta fill in whatever was there. That's my only comment on the minute.
Okay. Anybody else? We will move for approval. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Castro.
Abstain.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Those minutes are approved. Next, the minutes of June 5.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Any comments on Mr. Metters?
Abstain, I was absent.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Castro.
Abstain.
And Mr. Shell says aye. The minutes are approved. Next, we have public announcements and agenda requests. Any from the Board? Okay. Any from the public in the room here? I don't see any. Do we have any on, online?
No, no hands are up.
Okay. Moving right along. We have a public hearing. I will pass it to the clerk to read the notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that this Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, at 5:30 PM in a large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261, George Rider Road, and remotely through the link in the posted agenda to consider changes to the Town of Chatham's Local Alcohol Beverages Licensing Regulations, Section 6, Application Procedure, Amendments to Existing Licenses to Codify Local Requirements for Extensions of Existing Licensed Premises to Outdoor Areas Due to the Change in the Massachusetts General Law. All Interested Parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
Hi.
Please, Shawna.
Shawna Neely, the licensing agent for the Board. With the Governor's passage of an Act for Supplemental Appropriations for 2024, excuse me, on April 30, 2024, there were certain changes made to Chapter 138, which regulates liquor licenses, on-premise liquor licenses for restaurants, inns, et cetera, which removed the requirement for the approval at the state level for an extension of an existing license to an outdoor area. So with that removal of the state's approval, it also removed any requirement for a public hearing or notice to abutters. And just being very aware of the sensitivity in town to that type of change to a license premise, I wanted to suggest to the Board that you incorporate into your local regulations the requirements for public hearings and for notification to abutters for those types of applications. All of the, the notice and the suggested changes were provided to all the licensees through an email on May 24th, as required by the regulations. So primarily on, the changes are on, on page 13 of the regulations, but I did want to note that there were some minor formatting changes on page 12 that was just due to spacing that we wanted to take care of at the same time.
So I'll open it to the public for comment. I just want to inquire, however, am I correct to understand that the only subject for discussion this evening pursuant to the notice is this proposed new language that you've included, marked in the, in the regulation?
Correct. For this particular hearing, it is just this section and this amendment. Any further amendments that the Board may want to consider would have to be taken up in a separate hearing.
Thank you. I'll entertain comments from the public or questions. Mr. Oppenheim?
David Oppenheim, absolutely, I'm gonna run. My comment is, I think this is a good step, like it was obviously with some of the things that expansions have got on, there's been, let's just say, some people are unhappy they weren't noticed. And I think in some things you had to notice abutters and some things you didn't have to notice abutters. My comment on this is, I, I think this is start, but I don't think it's enough. I think it should be people within 300, similar to Board of Appeals or Planning Board notice. I don't think it's just, should be just abutters, it should be within 300 feet. And the reason I say that is, and I don't want to pick on anyone because I'm not here to object to anything that's been done in particular. If you look at something, certain restaurant like, well, I'll use the Squire, I don't mean to pick on them, but for example, they don't abut the Mayflower Complex, they don't abut Stripe Berlin, they don't abut Mill Pond Lane, which is where a lot of the residences are that are affected by things like this, and they may have commentary. I don't think they abut Ken Place, most of the houses on Ken Place. So I think by expanding it to something similar to, I mean, if you have to move a generator two feet from what's allowed and go to the Board of Appeals to do it, you have to notify people that are 300 feet away, even though they won't be able to hear the generator. And so I think that it would make more sense if you're going to put an amendment in like this to expand it to the point so that, that all the people that are actually affected by the changes that could occur are properly noticed. And that's my suggestion.
Thank you. Go ahead. As I understand it, the zoning, the zoning rule, or I think it's in state statute, is abutters on abutters within 300 feet, is that what you're talking about?
I, I honestly don't know if it's a abutters to a abutters. It's usually, I, I use it.
But you're talking about this, whatever is, whatever is in the zoning.
Something similar to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I think that would be appropriate notice for the people that would be affected.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Anybody online?
No.
Comments from the Board?
Oh, Mike.
I'm sorry. Do we have somebody online now?
Yeah, sorry, Mike, this is Joe Ryan.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Please. I would just like to support what Mr. Oppenheim, in that, it's not just direct the, direct the abutters, but the noise envelope from the Squire and the playa does extend well into the neighborhoods that he just mentioned. And I know that those folks, you know, felt left out of the process before and really would have an opportunity to have their voice heard and any changes to those operating spaces.
I, I think we got most of what you were saying, Mr. Ryan, but you kind of broke up a little bit there.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I, I was just seconding, seconding, Mr. Oppenheim, that, that the names that are within a noise envelope of 250 or 300 be notified as well.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of that. And we could have gone another way, but I like this one better. Isn't there like a 200-foot rule that we use for, and under the licensing regulations for?
For entertainment licenses, we've been using 250 feet.
Yeah, okay. But I, I'm perfectly comfortable with the rule that applies in the case of zoning, the ZBA, as Mr. Oppenheim proposed, whatever it is. I think it's about around a butter within 300 feet, or it's straight 300 feet, whatever it is.
Jeff?
I'm fully supportive as well. Is seven days the normal notice? Is that the normal notice?
This is actually, we've been doing two weeks under the state law.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like two weeks. I'd like two weeks.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
That's why I would make that, that change. And I'm in agreement with 300 feet if that works, the ZBA, it's reasonable, it's fair.
Go ahead, Corey.
No, I just want to make sure we have a policy put in place that is clear to anyone that would be potentially surrounding a project, you know, impacted positively, negatively, and also something that is clear for any applicant coming in, what the expectation is. So being consistent with the zoning Board of Appeals criteria, dimensions, don't have a problem with that at all, as long as we have it crystal clear that both parties know what they're expected going forward with any request, I'm fine with.
I, I just, we've had a couple of comments here about the, consistent with the zoning Board of Appeals. I, I gather that your entertainment license notice is, is, is that just 250 feet, or is it?
250 feet in all directions.
And it doesn't matter whether it's a butter on a butter or not?
Correct.
And I, given that the concern here is noise, I, I don't, I have no idea whether the abutter on a butter from the zoning Board of Appeals would be restrictive so somebody wouldn't get notice. To my mind, I think maximizing the notice is highly desirable here in, in view of the, experience that we've had and, and is responsive to the community, and, and I don't know that there's any, other than consistency, which in this case may or may not be something that we necessarily want to have guide the, the ultimate answer, I don't, I don't know how you feel about that.
I might suggest 300, to property owners within 300 feet of the premise.
I do.
Just remove the abutting.
And, and 14 days' notice.
And 14 days' notice.
Okay.
I'm supportive.
Any, the, the only other thing I'll mention here, I, I'm fine and we, we can't do anything about it now, I, I note that the, the new license provision is limited to abutters. We can leave that for another day perhaps, but I just note that for the record.
That, that is still under state law, yes.
Oh, it is still under state law. But we, would we, we have the ability to expand that if we like.
If you wanted to adopt more stringent regulations within the local regs, you certainly have that option.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay. We need, do we, I, I'm not sure when you do this and don't, but I think we have to close.
I was gonna ask you, I, I think, well, apart from the closing of the hearing, do we want to adopt, do we want a motion to approve these changes and how do we, can we do it tonight?
I can certainly bring the, the amended language back to you if that would make you more comfortable.
Perfect.
Okay.
Soon. Okay, I mean, that, that, then fine, we'll, we'll, you'll bring it back and we'll continue the hearing to?
Do we need to do that in the hearing too?
We do need to.
It's a continuation of this hearing.
So we need to continue the hearing.
You don't have to advertise it again.
No. Don't have to re-advertise it.
Just quick question, I always, I, my, my planning board day requirements and this, so for this continuation, do we have to have a date specific?
Date certain would be, yes.
Okay. That was my question, so, and we can always continue it from there, but we just have to establish a date.
July 9.
July 9th, so moved.
We can't be ready by June 25?
It's, my understanding was the Board did not want additional items on that.
All right, fine.
It would be really fast, it would be really fast.
I, I appreciate that, but Shereen won't be here, we'll, 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 we'll do it, we'll do it the 9th, that's fine. So we do need a motion for that, though, I think, to continue.
Move, move to continue to Jan. 9, move to continue the hearing till Jan. 9.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Castro.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next case. Now, I misplaced my. Rob, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So here to give you a brief update on the water supply for the month of May. Big news this month, water and sewer maintenance and operations contract. So Weston and Sampson has served us well for at least the past 10 years. We went out RFPs, we had three well-qualified proposals, and the town has decided to contract with Veolia. Once they're on board, starting July 1st, we'll anticipate them attending a select board meeting to give you folks a rundown of their operations and the opportunity to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
Actually, I do, Rob, can you just note about the transition of staff to the new company as well?
Sure, absolutely. So Veolia's been in negotiation with all of Weston and Sampson staff that currently serve the town, and all, if not all, most will transition to Veolia. They're still in some of the final negotiation stages, so we will have that historical knowledge going forward, people that are familiar with our systems. Veolia really impressed us with their training programs, their internships, they're addressing a lot of the staffing issues that we've struggled with in the past. They have a presence on the Cape already, and so they have a, they're an international company, so they have a lot of resources at their disposal to help us, you know, tackle some of the obstacles that we, that we face frequently.
Shereen?
That was the question where, you know, what kind of company were they? So they're an international company?
They're huge, yeah, they're very large.
And, okay.
And what town are they with on the Cape?
They have Orleans, they have Hyannis, I'm not sure if there are others, but they have a, a good presence, and off Cape too, they have a very solid presence within Massachusetts. And off Cape too, they have a very solid presence within Massachusetts, but off Cape.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Where are they headquartered? Or do they have, do they have a?
They have a Massachusetts headquarters, but that's not their.
No, I know. Where is the Massachusetts? Up in the Boston area?
Yeah, it's outside of Boston.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
So did Weston and Sampson, did they participate in the request for proposals?
They did. So Weston and Sampson, Veolia, and Infomark were the three proposals we received.
And, and it was after the selection was made that the negotiation went on to move employees over?
Correct. We gave a notice to award to Veolia, and that's when they started the negotiation process. We gave them the clear. And Weston and Sampson actually gave them the clear to negotiate with their own employees.
Okay.
I just Googled them. They're, they're a French transnational company, but they do have a Boston-based headquarters for USA.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll continue. So training field wells five and eight, temporary treatment well five, that's in production for the summer, the permanent treatment facility. We held our pre-construction meeting with the general contractor. They expect to begin site work tomorrow. So things are moving along nicely. Again, just as a reminder, the, the projected cost for the iron and manganese and PFOS filtration treatment plant is fifteen point eight million dollars. Scheduled to be completed within two years.
What, what's, what is a VFD?
It's a variable filter device. So, so wells ten and eleven, so they are, they are new. We're seeing some growing pains. The motor on pump, the pump on well eleven blew. We don't know at this time if it's a warranty issue or if it's something related to a, a VFD, which is a variable filter device. It really makes the pumps start at a much slower RPM, and then it ramps them up to a, to a much higher, a working speed. So we didn't have VFDs at this point, so we don't know if, if it's a VFD issue or if it's a pump issue. So we are installing VFDs, both wells ten and eleven. We're replacing the pump at well eleven, and we will see if it's a warranty issue. Once they get it back to the shop, they'll take it apart and see if it's a warranty issue. Either way, we have to get those wells up and running for summer. So the well pump on well eleven is anticipated to be replaced tomorrow, and we're still working on the schedule for the VFDs, but I don't think that'll take more than a week to get those in. There is a cost associated. Each one is approximately ten thousand dollars for both the well pump and the VFD installation.
Okay.
Sounds like a warranty issue to me.
We will do everything we can to support that.
I bet you will, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
And for the month of May, wells have been running for twelve hours a day. May did not hit low-level alarm yet. And as far as water sampling, bacteria samples are all coming back bacteria-free. We collected lead and copper samples for schools and daycare facilities, and PFOS samples taken recently for wells four and five were both non-detect. And the annual seasonal flushing for the distribution system is complete as of now. So I'll turn your attention to the screen to see month of May, two thousand twenty-three versus two thousand twenty-four, we're much lower than we were last year. I think a lot of that may have to do with the weather that we had in May. There were, it was cooler and there were rainy weekends and a lot, and a lot of people, I think, weren't visiting, so. So that's good. You know, it's not, not maybe good for business, but it's good for our water supply. So we're down about twenty-five percent in May. If we look at the, the comparison, May two thousand twenty-three is in blue, May two thousand twenty-four is in orange, and you just see the daily rate is, is much lower. Again, same thing on the bar chart below that, it just shows where we are and how many millions of gallons we're pumping every day. On the May two thousand twenty-four pumping report, Select Board Chair Shell, we identified that column. It was, it was a seven-day revolving number. We didn't really think there was a lot of value placed on that, so we just eliminated it to make the table a little bit easier to read.
So just to confirm, the, the, the column now adds up to what's at the bottom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
You can see here too, on, on wells ten and eleven, where well eleven was pumping, and then towards the end of the month, that's when we started having issues, and then, and then the pump motor blew. And the pumping graph below is just a kind of a graphical depiction of the same information. And this is just a chart showing pumpage per well per month. You see, we've already pumped one hundred and twenty-four million gallons as of the end of May. And again, at the, the bar chart below that, it just shows the level of effort on a, on a graphical scale for each of the wells.
Just for the record, I think this year we've, we pumped one hundred and seven million. Is that right?
Yes. I'm sorry, you're correct. That was last year, it was one twenty-four.
Yeah.
And then here is the USGS groundwater observation wells. You can see we're on the seasonal decline. I took this snapshot late last week. You know, we almost reached the, Chatham is on the top, and we almost reached the, the high level of last year before our seasonal decline. But the good news is on the Brewster Observation Well below that, we far exceeded last year's water level before our decline. You can see the decline seems like it's, it's sharper. Hopefully, it's, it's not too steep going forward, and it starts to level off a little bit. And finally is just the five-year comparison. And you can see at thirty-seven million gallons for the month of May, two thousand twenty-four is less than our average. It's quite a bit less than last year. Last year and two thousand and twenty-one were kind of the high years, and, you know, we're kind of more average with two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Looks good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Little looks good. I think you're, you're gonna see June probably have some heavier usage because of the heat stuff.
We, we did already hit low level once in June. But, but usage is down in June as well, so that's a good sign.
These are great reports.
Yeah. Indeed. Anybody else? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So next, we have public comments on the business agenda. Anybody in the audience here in town, here in the room? I don't see anybody. Anybody online?
Just giving them a second. No, I don't see anybody.
Okay, going once. We will turn to the business agenda. The first item is a request to use town property at the two thousand twenty-four Community Environmental Fair on Friday, August sixteen, from eight AM to four PM at the Chatham Community Center, and that is on behalf of the Chatham Conservation Foundation. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Lauren Arcamano, I'm with the Chatham Conservation Foundation, and I understand that we had to appear because we have a number of vendors who would like to sell merchandise at that fair.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Is this, this the first time you, you've done this, or?
This will be our second one.
Second one, okay. It's just not, I'm very supportive.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive. I just have a technical question, and this is probably for Jill. The, the, the description up above says the event will include sales of native plants, et cetera. And then the motion is use of town property, period. Do we need to have both things covered, or are we done with just using town property?
I think we should add that approving the, the use of outside sales. Is that how we referenced it?
Include sales of, sales of things from various nonprofits in, in attendance at the, at the event. Yep.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
I think I hear a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think I'm next up. Am I?
Oh, you are next up, yeah.
Somebody planned the agenda rather well.
Okay. This is for a one-day alcohol permit at a garden party fundraiser on Sunday, July twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, from four to six PM at ninety-five Independence Way, and once again.
Hi, I'm Lauren Arcamano from the Chatham Conservation Foundation.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is it an annual event? Do a repeat.
No, this is our first.
First, okay.
Our first garden party, correct.
Mr. Chair, is this a private residence?
It is a private residence, correct.
I wasn't sure if it was abutting the?
It does abut our property.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any, yeah, Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a special one-day alcohol permit to the Chatham Conservation Foundation for the garden party fundraiser on Sunday, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, from four to six PM at ninety-five Independence Way.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you done?
I think I'm done for today.
Okay, good. Next, we have a one-day entertainment license at Buffy's Midsummer Employee Gala on Saturday, June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four, from two PM to ten PM at four fifty-eight Main Street, Buffy's Ice Cream. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board members, a load of fans of Buffy's Ice Cream watching along on Chatham TV. Yes, this is just, it's a one-day entertainment permit. We're having a small band play from a couple of sets, one from four to six, another one from seven thirty till about nine. The, the event is a, a kind of a summer kickoff for our summer staff and their families and friends, and no alcohol to be served. We have contacted our direct butters, have it extended out to three hundred feet, although I think that will not be taken up until apparently the June ninth meeting. So any questions?
Jeff?
Is it an annual event?
It's the second annual event. It's actually, we, correction, we did not have the event last year. We had it in twenty-two.
Okay. No liquor?
No.
And then the loud, the music is gonna be a band, guitar?
Yeah, two, two or three-piece band, guitar, drums, situated kind of in the rear of, of the property away from the street.
Okay.
Yep.
And you had no issues last year?
None at all, no. A lot of, you know, it's, it's for the, the staff, but it's open to our customers as well, as well, and people enjoyed it. It's akin to, you know, Mondays on Main type of, you know, event.
Thank you.
Dean?
I was just gonna ask the same question, but let me ask you, in your contact with the butters, you didn't have any negative?
I'm very fortunate to have great neighbors and, and the community in that part of town. I'm sure it's the same in other parts of town. It's wonderful and always supportive.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, I move to grant a one-day entertainment license to Buffy's Ice Cream for the Midsummer Employee Gala on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, from two, two o'clock PM to ten o'clock PM at four fifty-eight Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Have fun. Next, we have the, a one-day, a special one-day alcohol permit for the tenth anniversary sip and shop event on Friday, July five, two thousand twenty-four, from five PM to eight PM at seventeen Post Office Square for the Changing Tides Consignment Boutique. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kira Travis.
I'm Siobhan Clune.
We're the owners. Yeah, so we're just doing a little ten-year anniversary, little prosecco, pretty casual, and.
Yep, and all the alcohol will be inside, and we'll purchase it from a wholesaler and chip-certified people serving it.
And I did see the note about moving the table back away from the door a little bit, so we will. It is actually farther back than my very detailed diagram, so it will be farther from the door.
Okay. Any questions? Shereen?
No, just congratulations on ten years. We appreciate you a lot. So I'm going to make a motion. I move to grant a special one-day alcohol permit to Changing Tides Consignment Boutique for their tenth anniversary sip and shop on Friday, July fifth, two thousand twenty-four, from five to eight PM at seventeen Post Office Square.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Congratulations and have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, this is a one-day entertainment license and a request to use town property, as well as a request for sales on town property, and a request for food trucks on town property on behalf of the fourth annual Witches on Water fundraising costume stand-up paddleboard paddle on Saturday, October five, from three PM to five thirty PM at Oyster Pond Beach from the Witches on, on the water. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for having us here tonight. We appreciate your time. I'm Joellen Erickson. I am one of the co-founding members and president of Witches on the Water. And yes, this is our fourth annual event here in Chatham. We love having it at Oyster Pond. To date, we've already donated over eighty thousand dollars to other local nonprofits around the Cape, and this year, our recipient is Dream Day on Cape Cod. So basically, everything is essentially the same we have done over the last few years, but we do have a couple minor changes. We are looking to not only have the two food trucks that we've had in the past, but also have an ice cream, a Good Times Ice Cream Truck as well there, if doable. And we did move the event to in the afternoon as opposed to in the morning. And again, we're just following Mother Nature and the tides to make it doable and as safe as we can. We have already collaborated with all, the police, fire department, and the Harbor Master to have them all on board again this year, which is terrific. And the only other addition is, we are gonna, we're really hoping this is the charm for Mother Nature to work with us and not have to go indoors. But it just, over the years, we've realized if we're going to do a rain date, we really should just do it the next day. So we're asking to do the whole entire event the very next day, if doable, if we get rained out on the fifth, which is a Saturday. And again, as always, if we can sell our nonprofit merchandise at the event, all of nonprofit merchandise at the event, um, all of that money goes back to Witches on the Water. Any questions?
Sounds like a great event.
It's so fun.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really sorry you haven't had good weather.
I know, but you know what? I think the big message is here, no matter what is handed to us, we're always achieving our goal and being able to raise great funds for our nonprofits. So I'm very proud of that, but it would really be fun to have it all happening on one day at, at Oyster Pond, if doable. So we're shooting for this year.
Well, that's great. Any questions from the board? I guess I'll take a motion.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Please?
I move to grant use of town property to Witches on the Water for the Fourth Annual Fundraising Costume SUP.
Sup, right? Yep, that's right. Sup paddle. Perfect.
On Saturday, October 5, 2024, from 1:00 to 6:30 p.m. at Oyster Pond and Parking Lot. Also grant a one-day entertainment license to Witches on the Water for amplified music on Saturday, October 5, 2024, from 3:30 to 5:30 at Oyster Pond Parking Lot. And we should also amend this to say a rain date.
With a rain date, yes.
With a rain date, so if we can just, um, Parking Lot Sales, um, also to grant sales on town property to Witches on the Water on Saturday, October 5, and/or Sunday, October 6, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at Oyster Pond Beach and Parking Lot. And also to grant permission for three food trucks contracted by Witches on the Water Incorporated to then at Oyster Pond on Saturday, October 5, 2024, or Sunday, October 6, 2024, from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. Food trucks must depart no later than 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Uh, okay, any further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Nac-
That's what's, um, October 6th is the rain date.
Yeah, it, it's kind of mixed in, but we'll just.
We'll add that in.
Everything is modified by, um, an October 6 rain date.
Aye.
With the same times.
Okay, aye.
Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Wonderful.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful summer, everyone. Thank you so much.
We'll see you in the fall.
I look forward to it.
I have to refuse myself on the next two items for, um.
Okay.
Monomoy Community Services.
Okay. Uh, next, we have, um, two items from Monomoy Community Services, the first of which is a one-day entertainment license and special one-day alcohol permit, uh, for the Back to Summer Hangar Party on Saturday, July 6, 2024, from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. at Chatham Municipal Airport, uh, by the Monomoy Community Services, Inc. And I'm gonna presume that we have somebody online. Is Teresa online?
I don't see, Mr. Chair, I don't see her online, but I, I can say that this, they had the same event last year, and there were no issues.
Okay. And I think we've, I, I think, uh, we, we have discretion to waive the requirement that the proponent be, um, be, be, be present, do we not? I think we do.
Yeah, Shawna's shaking her head.
Didn't we vote that?
She agrees. Okay, good. So we're in good shape here.
We are.
Uh, we know the event very well. Um, any comments?
None at all, Mr. Chair. I move to grant a one-day entertainment license for amplified live music to be played at the Back to Summer Hangar Party on Sa- Saturday, July 6, 2024, at the Chatham Municipal Airport from 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Ian, I also move special one-day alcohol permit for all alcohol beverages to Teresa Malone of Monomoy Community Services for Saturday, July 6, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Chatham Municipal Airport for the Back to Summer Hangar Party.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I'll second that. Now, I have a question. Do they need a food truck permit, Shawna? I don't see that in the vote.
Uh, we've considered this event under the, um, special permit. I don't have it in front of me.
They can sell anything.
So it, it's sort of like the, the, um.
Oktoberfest.
The Oktoberfest or, or First Night, or Witches on Water. It's the same, this, we, we, we consider it under the same bylaw.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Next, also from, uh, Teresa Malone of Monomoy Community Services, a proposal for a, an alcohol, uh, on town property, special one-day, uh, permit and a one-day entertainment license for the Taste of Chatham on Monday, July 29, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Chase Park. Um, again, I don't see anybody here, but that's also a very, and this has been going on for many, many years.
I just have a question for Shawna, since Teresa's not here, because I live in the general neighborhood, and I know that some of the neighbors and, uh, some of the butters and other neighbors get very concerned. Were there any issues in the past? I know they did it last year, right?
We have not had any complaints registered with our office or reported by the PD.
I think last year Teresa indicated, because I had asked her if they could reach out to the neighbors, I, maybe they might wanna just, we, we might wanna just encourage her to do that in advance, so that.
I think the only issue was the tent on the croquet.
Yeah, okay.
Courts.
Well, that's the croquet club.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
The only question I have for Teresa or for Shawna was the numbers are the limited, limitation on guests from, to 200 from 400. I just, I.
They did that last year. That I know was, although the, the, um, somewhere else in the application, it talks about 250, um, but last year, my recollection is that it was 200.
Get your tickets early.
Yeah, that's.
That's the point, I think, yeah. Okay.
Yes, indeed. Uh, and it was very popular. Um, I'm sure there were people who didn't get tickets on time.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the approval of the request for alcohol to be served in Chase Park on Monday, July 29, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. I move to grant a special one-day liquor license through Teresa Malone as a representative of Monomoy Community Services from Monday, July 29, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And I move a, I move to grant a one-day entertainment permit for outdoor live music to Teresa Malone as representative of Monomoy Community Services from Monday, July 29, 2024, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m.
Go ahead, a second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Dykens?
Mr. Dykens says aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Done. Okay.
I, I will comment. I think Dean's suggestion of contacting the neighbors is a good idea.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, good. Um, next, we have a request to use town property, um, oh, this is one we've had before us previously, uh, for first-night performances on Tuesday, December 31, 2024, uh, to use, uh, Town Hall at 549 Main Street by First Night Chatham. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, Mr. Shell, I just think this is a, uh, just, he's letting us know that they're not gonna start to set up, uh, until 4:00 p.m. They're not gonna do earlier, is what this is.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, they'll do the setup at 2:00 p.m., but they're not gonna start the performances until 4:00 p.m. after the town employees have left.
Okay. Okay. Yep.
I was just gonna say, Paul Stuka actually called me the other night, but he was not gonna be able to make it, and they said they would defer to the staff recommendation. They were comfortable with it, so.
Okay, well, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Things good.
Truthfully, I, that wasn't entirely clear to me in, uh, in the memo. I'm delighted to hear that they did work that out, so I'll take a motion.
So we're waiving the personal appearance again, right?
Uh, I don't, is this, uh, I thought that was for alcohol permits. Yeah. Um, but I'll still take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the use of the Town Hall basement meeting, meeting room for performance setups starting at 2:00 o'clock p.m. and performances starting no earlier than 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 31, 2024, for First Night Chatham. Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Done. Um, and finally, we have an application, I say finally, it may not be, um, for a new common victueller, uh, license by Pandavignon Cafe and Boulangerie at 71 Crowell Road. Welcome.
Good evening, Attorney Jeff Ford here, representing the applicant, CCNY LLC, uh, doing business as Pandavignon Cafe. Um, so this is a site over on Crowell Road you're probably familiar with. It's been several bakeries and cafes in the past. Uh, most recently, it was Emma Bell's that's gone out of there. They, they're not gonna go forward there, and Pandavignon had the opportunity to obtain a lease on the property. They're very excited. Uh, you may be familiar with them. They're, they're centered in Hyannis is their main location, and they have a large bakery operation as well, and they do wholesale out of that location. This would be used as a restaurant. Um, they're proposing to have breakfast, coffee, um, pastries, um, a lunch menu, and also a dinner menu. They're very excited about the opportunity to be in there. They're not changing anything on the site at this point. Same floor plan, same layout. We've been to the Board of Health. They've already approved the, uh, food establishment permit. Um, we've worked with fire. They've already done all the inspections, and so this is our, our last stop.
Jeff?
Well, I can't, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna miss, well, we, we, we already missed Chatham Bakery, and we're gonna miss Emma Bell's, but I, I'm not gonna be bashful on it. This is a great addition to the town, to be honest with you. I'm very familiar with the operation in Hyannis. It's wonderful. So if you bring that type of operation here to Chatham, we are, uh, we are blessed. It's great. Really, really welcome, and it sounds as though you're well on your way. How about help? I see signs out for help, or you?
I know, I know they've been looking, and, uh, we've got Mario here tonight. He's the, the COO, and he's been working very hard on that end as well, so I think, I think we're coming along.
Well, it's a wonderful business. It's a good, great business in Hyannis. A lot of fun. Thanks.
Go ahead, Cory.
So I have some familiarity with this property. Yeah, um, the family has, you know, been affiliated with this with their Chatham Bakery for years, and we miss it, and I know that people miss the donuts, but I'm very supportive of, um, Pandavignon moving forward. Um, they actually reached out to the family and I think, and disclosed their intention of maybe coming into Chatham, and I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive, and I think it's gonna be a good addition to the community. I think that, I think they're gonna fit in just fine.
Dean?
I'm just gonna echo what's been said. I think it's fantastic that your client is coming here, and it's great that it's gonna stay as a food establishment, and, um, I think everybody knows your pro, the products, and, uh, so we look forward to having you here. It's great.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just gonna make the motion. How's that?
Can I, please, can I say one thing?
Yes, please do.
I, I just wanna, I love the place. Our family loves the place, uh, and I'm delighted to be, uh, relieved, uh, at least in some circumstances, of the need to go to Hyannis, um, for lunches, breakfast, pastries, whatever, maybe even dinners, uh, and be able to do it right here on Crowell Road. So I'm, I'm thrilled. So please, I'm sorry to.
That's quite okay. I, uh, I move to approve the application for common victuellers licensed by CCNY LLC. DBA Pandavignon Cafe Boulangerie has applied for a common victueller license for 71 Crowell Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. Thanks very much.
Hey, terrific. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Look.
Okay, here we go. This is the big one. Uh, I think our next, yes, is the award of a bond anticipation note from our Director of Finance, Carrie Mazurul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Carrie Mazurul, Finance Director. Um, good evening. Um, yep, so this is the end-of-year borrowing for multiple projects. Um, it is for, uh, $9,065,000. Um, we originally asked for $9,495,000, and we received a premium amount of $567,000. $430,000 will go towards the project costs. That would reduce the amount that we're going to borrow, and the additional premium will be applied to pay costs for the rating agencies, um, bond counsel, municipal advisors, and paying agents. Um, so we will have no out-of-pocket additional costs as the premium is reserved for the fees associated with the per, with the borrowing. Um, we did receive eight, um, applicants or, I don't know, bids, I guess you can call them, that were looking at us. Um, and I did talk to our financial advisors today, and they said that they've, this is like, they haven't seen this in a long time. They were very impressed with, um, the timing and everything, so, um, it, it's really, it's a really good deal. So. And also, our, we received our, as you guys know, our S&amp;P rating came back as a AAA.
Yay. To Carrie, yes.
Yes.
Um, Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Uh, Carrie, if you'd just could outline, or Jill, just outline kind of what, what we're doing with the monies and the, what projects we're covering? I think that would be helpful.
Uh, yeah, I do have an outline of all the projects, so just bear with me. I have a lot of paperwork over here.
A lot of it's for the waterfront bond.
Yep.
Projects, um, well, and chemical feed buildings, transfer station, wastewater bonds. So it looks like there's about, um, 10 or so, uh, projects that Carrie mentioned end of year. It's to do the borrowing so that our books can close.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so we don't have a deficit. So, um, we, there's eight projects. Um, and like Jill said, we have the waterfront bond, um, the waterfront, the, I guess I call it fish and pier waterfront facilities. Um, then we have two wastewater, the transfer station redesign, um, and then we've got, um, the wells, some water projects, the wells 10 and 11, 5 and 8 PFAS, and Mill Pond.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it looks, the terms look great. 3.38 all-in is good, that, that's a good rate.
Anybody else? Uh, Jeff? Uh, Jeff?
Sorry, it's okay.
Dean?
Do, uh, Carrie or Jill?
Yes.
Do we have to, um, read the, all the language in the, um, actual vote of the Select Board, or? We've done that, we've done it both ways. I don't know what's required.
I don't think so, because.
The vote in your cover memo simply references it.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm gonna jump in here and say, I, 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 when I read it, I thought if we just read all of the things that are voted and did those at once, that would.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't know whether we had to read that all, but I'm happy to do that.
It's not.
I have a cock drop in my mouth, but I'm happy to do it.
But I, I, I wanna ask, um, we, we have a, a, a bunch of certifications in here on behalf of this, yourself, um, Town Manager, the Select Board, and I've read it. I didn't see anything in there that I thought was wrong, but there could be things that I, I don't know about, so I'm asking you, if you've, uh, in conversation and consultation with the Town Manager, between the two of you, you're comfortable that all those representations are accurate?
Yes, that is correct, and we had one thing updated, because it wasn't updated the home rule, so we updated that.
Charter, Charter Amendment is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and the treasurer and the town clerk will sign this as well.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions, comments, whatever?
Mr. Shell?
Yes?
I recommend that we vote to award the $9,495,000 General Obligation Municipal Purpose Loan of 224 Bonds dated June 27, 2024, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets in accordance with the terms set forth in the attached bid and notice of sale relating to the bonds, and is detailed in the attached vote of the Select Board.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Mr. Met- No, no, I, I, I think that the recommendation is that we incorporate in that resolution what is identified in the attachment, the vote of the Select Board, and all the, uh, specific items, and I'm comfortable with that.
Comfortable with that.
Any others?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Mr. Shell, I don't wanna have the AAA bond rating given short shrift here.
Right.
It's a wonderful document. It is, it is full of information, and hopefully we post it on the town's website, and we use it as a, as a document that details our debt, et cetera. It's very interesting, and it's, it's a, it's a really good report.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add to that, too, uh, two things. First of all, just in, in terms of approving bond authorizations, what we have here is an example, and there's a whole list of when these specific elements were approved that go back as mu, as far as four years. So, uh, when we approve a bond authorization at town meeting, that doesn't necessarily mean that the bonds are gonna be issued tomorrow. It, it, it's an authorization that gives us, um, powder with which to do the kinds of things that are done. That's my first point, which is the minimum, uh, the, 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 the not-so-important point. My real important point, however, I think, is that this is a really, really strong endorsement of the overall management, um, and, and governance of this town and finance of this town. Um, and we run into a lot of problems and a lot of issues, and we hit, uh, bumps and, and, and walls and, and, and so forth, but, you know, when an agency like, um, the, the, the rating agency comes in and looks at everything we're doing and says you are as high a, uh, uh, an investment risk, meaning you are the best investment risk that can be had out there, uh, that's, that's a big deal. Um, and I just wanna commend everybody that's involved here. Um, most importantly, the, the staff that is, um, those who are here in the room and those who contributed to this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We need to take a, did we vote?
We did.
I did, we did vote.
We did vote, yep.
Do you want us to do something else?
No, I'm just standing here. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You too, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, okay, we have one item left here, which is, uh, sorry, we have two. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, construction on Morris Island. I'm not sure whether, is Greg here? Oh, there's Greg. Okay, good. Hello, welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you. Greg Berman, Director of Natural Resources. This is just intended as an update and opportunity for the select board to ask questions regarding construction that's ongoing at Morris Island. I think anybody with a vote has probably noticed over the past several months that the revetment at 97 Tulip has seriously degraded, completely failed in some areas, and has slipped into the waters. So there is an emergency certification that has been permitted by the Conservation Commission. But the engineer has undergone several different phases and updated their plans fairly frequently for this. So the original plan was to drive sheet pile, which was not going to be that really large of a impediment to the town. But it turns out that the coastal bank does not have the geo technical properties to be able to support sheet pile. They revised their plans. They were going to bring in a 70-foot by 140-foot barge and bring about 900 truckloads of rock from June to August. This was highly concerning to a lot of town staff. Department of Natural Resources has been in touch with a lot of the other town departments, fire, police, to kind of get a feel for how badly that would have impacted the town. Since that, it has been revised a couple of times again since then. I don't need to necessarily get into the, you know, potential impacts of what would have happened if we had that many truckloads over the summer. But the current plan is to reduce the size of the barge to a 35-foot by 140-foot. The concern with the barge was the harbor master was concerned that it would block traffic and potentially be a hazard to recreational and commercial boaters. It was intended to be left there all night, 24 hours a day. Now, it's a much smaller barge, and they're gonna tuck it up against the shoreline when not in use. So he feels it's a much more reasonable application. And then regarding the truckloads, they're, they're still anticipating that volume of rock. But their current plan is to pause as of July 2, which is the end of the emergency certification. They are already delivering rock to the site, and we have strongly recommended that they stockpile that rock so it doesn't interfere with the July 4 weekend travel. One of the other issues was the truck route that they showed us, had them going right down Main Street, past Town Hall. I personally find that hard enough in just a regular vehicle, much less a 10-wheel truck full of rock. So they have since rerouted to go along Shore Road and down over to Morris Island. Another concern was that the tide gate at Morris Island is in a state of disrepair, as we know. This is one of the projects that the town voted to fund. We're probably going for a coastal zone management to expand the feasibility and how it should be designed in the future. But for the short term, we did not want this many trucks impacting the tide gate. So as of just, I believe, yesterday, the contractor, Robert B. Hour, has installed steel plating and a hot mix. And we have worked with the DPW in town. They feel that it's very likely, well, it's definitely better than it was before that. So we have that going forward. NOIs will be filed for any additional work after July 2. But really, we just wanted to be able to provide this information to the select board in case there's questions about, you know, a large amount of trucks on the road and barges in the water. And just kind of a little side note about barges in the water. The Army Corps of Engineers is gonna have the vessel Merton come back on June 27. It was a little unexpected, but we're happy to let them kind of fill a hole in their schedule for the town of Chatham. We get some more dredging done, which is gonna, you know, the channel's not that bad right now, but any additional work we can get done is great. This is thanks to our congressional delegation. But just, so that would be over in the Stage Harbor area, but right across Morris Island by 97 Tulip is where the barge for that particular work is. So just, there's gonna be a lot of work going on in the area. We'd love to let people know about it.
Yeah, Jeff?
Are we dredging the Stage Harbor Channel? Is that what the, okay.
Yes.
So they'll be, okay. And when does that start, Greg? I'm sorry.
Sure, it's June 27.
Okay. And they, we think you're gonna be here a week or two or three, or?
It's, it's still a little, we, we didn't get as much information as we usually do, because they're just kind of, they had to shift going from a previously scheduled location to ours. We're hoping they're gonna be here for a couple of weeks to get the job done. But I think we'll get an assessment once they get here.
One quick follow-up. Where are they loading the rocks under the, the barge for Tulip? Where, where are they doing that loading? Has that happened yet? Or are they just storing rocks now?
Right. So the, the barge is there to be able to, and it's, it's undergone many permutations, one of which was to have a large steel platform, which was going to deploy geotextile onto the bottom underwater, and then the rock placed on top of it. So there was gonna be a crane on the barge to do that work. All of the rock was going to be delivered by land, so nothing was gonna be coming from the water. And then the crane would take the rock on land and place it, or maybe put it in the barge for replacement. But everything's coming by truck.
So, but, but just as, the rocks are coming by truck, but they have to get on a barge somewhere?
Right. So it's being stockpiled on the property.
Okay.
And then the crane is lifting the rocks onto the barge.
Gotcha.
On the property, 97 Tulip.
So it's on the property itself? Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Shereen?
Hi, Greg. Thanks for the update. This sounds like a massive project for, for, for the homeowners, obviously. And they obviously must have the means and the will to be able to, to facilitate this. Some of the things that I wanted to know was, when the revetment degraded and fell into the water, was there any, is there any, like, hazard to navigation around that area? That might be a question for our harbor master, but I didn't know if you were in the loop of, if there's any, if we have, we had to set out buoys? Are people gonna be restricted from that area? I mean, 'cause I'm sure it's gonna be quite a sight see adventure for some boaters.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we, we definitely have been in discussions. Our, our department has been having multiple meetings on this, harbor master, coastal resources, conservation. One of the reasons why that portion of the revetment collapsed is because there's scour holes right there, as deep as 40 and 50 feet. So the rock sliding down there is not necessarily gonna be a hazard to navigation. I think, you know, potential impacts to boating is gonna be the active barge working there, but the harbor master's required a safety boat paid for by the applicant to provide that service.
So, thank you. So the, the butters, or actually the properties, you know, that had all the trees on them, that were to the west, south, northwest, yeah, northwest, around the corner in the S, I call it the S-Channel. It's between Stage Harbor and the, and North Beach or South Beach. I guess there's been some, some removal of the trees happening there and things like that. Is that, is that gonna be done by, you know, like, 4th of July time? Are we, do we have concerns over, you know, trees that are gonna be in that, in that, in that channel?
So our harbor master is taking the lead on that. And we have actually contracted several folks in town to remove some of the most hazardous trees that have the, really the, the most danger of being in the waterways for the recreational and commercial traffic. One of the things that we did require when 97 Tulip came forward was to have them mark their particular trees. So they actually have a piece of red tape and paint around them. So I'm not gonna have the exact number. About five or six of the 30 or 40 trees that we have pulled out have been directly attributed to 97 Tulip. The property owners and engineers have indicated that they, they will reimburse for any of the trees that have been lost under the property that we need to clean up. The other trees are most likely from the wildlife refuge, and we've been working with the refuge. They don't necessarily have funding to do it right now, and certainly couldn't get it fast enough. So we did what we could to try to get this season in a relatively safe place. And we're gonna work towards reimbursement and having others do more work in the future.
Okay, thanks. I, I just have a comment about this, 'cause I, I think I'm, you know, I understand the property owner has a right to protect his property and do what he can. I'm just concerned about a butters, you know, the degradation that will go on from around, you know, that, that piece is protected, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're gonna see more degradation, you know, along the way and along the shoreline. Whether it's due to this or not, it's, it's happening. And, and it's just sort of an inevitable that's, that's happening within this area. Has any of the other butters approached the town about wanting to do a similar fortress sort of setup for, for their property? And I say that only as a, like, a tongue-in-cheeks. I don't mean to be vicious, uh, facetious, but, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, it did certainly a lot of rock. There's gonna be a lot of trap rock on the bottom, in addition to the revetment going up the face of the bank. So several of the properties along this stretch have already, you know, recently done bulkhead and revetment expansion. This was one that, you know, hadn't gotten there yet, and now it's very much time. And I completely agree that we can often be chasing erosion or pushing it further, you know, away. There's really no stopping erosion. There's only displacing it. So it, it can push to the sides. I mean, if we look kind of towards the northeast side of that line of revetments, back where the weather station used to be, that's focusing a lot of the erosion on that area, which may be making the erosion worse, allowing more trees to fall in there. In the same, right now, we're still on an emergency certification. This is not the full NOI process. The applicant has been told that they do need to come in for a full NOI. And at that point, any, you know, softening or mitigation efforts would be applied to this project.
Okay, great. It seems like you guys are really on top of it, and appreciate the time you're taking.
Thank you.
On this. Thank you.
Yeah. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg, where on the, on the PDF is the tide gate that you're referring to roughly? I know you don't have a pointer here, but
Yeah, it's, I, I mean, it, it's gonna be really hard for me not to do it with a pointer. It's right before you get to that hard, right before you get to that hard-left turn, if you can see.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe Jill or somebody could point to it. It's very close to that.
It's all right.
Actually, I'm sorry, that's perfect. That red arrow, the lowest one on the right?
Yeah.
Points, I believe that one points to the, it's calling it a culvert, but that's the tide gate right there. So the drivers are intended to slow down to five miles an hour. And we've also had them install the, the sheet plate and hot mix to, to make it better than it was, 'cause there were certainly concerns about the truck going over it.
Do we, have we required an insurance certificate from the contractor or the property owner, or should we, if we haven't?
Yeah.
If there's any damage?
So they have, they have not issued one to the town. They have one for the property owner, since we're not, you know, this does not work for the town. If, if so directed, I can reach out to them to see if they will add the town as an additional insured. But, I mean, they, they are on the hook for any damage they cause.
Okay. Well, it might be worth exploring that. That would be my suggestion. Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, those are some of the heaviest vehicles we're gonna experience here in Chatham ever. Dump trucks full of, full of gigantic rocks. And it's not really our concern, but I'm trying to stage it on, on that piece of property, and how close are the, is the heavy equipment, cranes and stuff, gonna get to the bank itself. And Robert B. Hour knows what they're doing, believe me. They're a, they're a great contractor, but that, that's a very artful project, I'll tell you right now. They're gonna be very careful dropping those rocks under our barge and into the water.
Even driving over the
Well, that's over the dyke, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
'Cause that's, those are heavy, heavy trucks. So anyway, we need to monitor it, and I'm sure we will, but
Just one other, I'm sorry. One other question. So my understanding is that the property owner is paying the full cost of this? I mean, I know we have staff time, town staff time, presumably there is some outside consultants the town is talking with, but the actual construction work is being done by, is being paid by the property owner. Is that correct?
Correct. It, it's only town staff time right now. We don't have outside consultants on this.
Okay.
But yes, this is the, the property owner. I mean, if, we, we've talked, you had internal discussions with both fire and police, and if they so deem additional details are needed, that would also be charged to the property owner.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the update. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I, I, I would, I mean, I, I guess I don't want to lose the, the insurance point. I, I don't know that I think it's appropriate for us to give you a direction, but I think it might be a very good thing. I, I mean, you said potential damage. I can imagine all kinds of damage, given our involvement in the process and oversight of the process, that I think it would be desirable if we had a, a, effectively coverage, secondary coverage through the, the, through the contractor.
I'll, I'll reach out, and I'll, you know, confirm documentation, and then maybe talk to our town council to see the best way to get us on that same coverage.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks very much. Great report.
Thank you. Good night.
Appreciate it.
Take a surprise.
Yeah, well, yeah, sure we will, yeah. The last item here on the agenda are two committee appointments to be considered. The first is for one open seat on the Community Housing Partnership on May 21. The Select Board Subcommittee interviewed Mr. Thomas Clark for a seat on the Community Housing Partnership. There is one open seat with a term ending June 30, 2024, but the, which, which would be carried over to June 30, 2027, if, if appointed. Go ahead, motion. No motion. All right. We'll move on to Shellfish Advisory Committee. On May 21, 2024, the Select Board interviewed Peter Van Amson for the Shellfish Advisory Committee. There is one current open seat for, with a term ending on June 30, 2026. And I'll invite a motion there.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Peter Van Amson as a member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee until June 30, 2026, until sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye.
Mr. Chair, not related to any future action, but I wanted to note that Teresa Malone had some phone difficulty, so she was on the meeting for Modern Way Community Service.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's, that's good.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. We are adjourned at